Good evening. This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen, special meeting of March 11th, 2024. We're in the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. It's 5:00. So we will rise and do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to catch up the other night. We need to approve the minutes from the public hearing of February 21st, 2024. So we've attached a copy of those minutes.
All right, move to approve the public hearing minutes of February 21st, 2024.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on the public hearing minutes? I don't have any changes. All right. Being done. And then all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done. The minutes are approved. So now we will turn to new business. And tonight, we're going to conclude hopefully the budget discussions and deliberations and adopt a 2024-2025 town budget. So I think we should begin with the Commission on Aging. And it's sort of tied in a way to Youth and Family Services, so we'll keep that one in front too, Section 425. Okay, so we met with the Commission on Aging and tried to resolve. There was some confusion over their numbers and our numbers. And we met the other day. And I think we've resolved the issues. And I think they're satisfied with the numbers that are being proposed. The difference, let's see. There are some changes. You're going to make some motions on them.
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, do you want to explain maybe what happened? Just, and then I can make the motions. And then everybody can kind of see if they have any questions.
Okay, I'll do a walkthrough. So the changes to the operating budget that happened over the last couple days were to Youth and Family Services Commission on Aging. So after the Board of Selectmen met on, I believe it was Wednesday night, Thursday afternoon, myself, Dan, the Commission on Aging Chairman, Mike Beckich, and the Director, Kristin Karimanka, all met in Dan's office to hash out the differences between the multiple spreadsheets that have been floating around and just to try to find a middle ground in numbers that everyone was comfortable with. So the Board has a new Commission on Aging packet in front of them. And we're just going to walk through the numbers. So if, just real quickly, it's four pages. If everyone goes to the last page real quick, we're going to, just so everyone can just look at their own pace, those are all the salary numbers. So the bus drivers and then all the administrators over there, how we tied back to the front spreadsheet. So just talk about some of the changes that happened. The initial proposal was for the part-time admin, the third person down, that makes about 27,755. That position was proposed to be paid from the Tambari Estate Funds. After speaking with the Commission on Aging, it was decided that they prefer if the Tambari Funds paid for programming, program-related expenses as opposed to salary expenses. So we flipped. The town will now pick up that part-time admin of 27,7. And the Tambari Estate will pick up Program Services, line 215. They will pick up line 321, Program Supplies, and 506 Program, yeah, Program Subsidy. So 3,020 and 2,600.
Sorry, Kevin, where's line 215 on the front?
215 is middle of the 200 section, that zero.
Oh, okay, I see. There's two 215s.
Yep, sorry about that. Every section has its own. When we go to Munis, this, it'll be a little clearer. But this, so it's this
Program Services.
Program Services up there.
And that's the Tambari.
Yep, and then down below, it's these zeros in the Board of Selectmen columns that'll have to get voted on tonight. And so just so everyone knows, when we left that meeting, everyone was in agreement about the 310,563 as the bottom line. I just wanted to, so I don't know if they're in attendance tonight, they're not. But that number was hashed out. That was the final number the four of us came to.
And they're in agreement and we're in agreement.
They're in agreement. So as part of that as well, I didn't know this, but I guess it was an understanding that when the Youth and Family Services was created, that department would pick up 25% of the social worker position. So so you'll see this, so there's three sources of revenue for this. Half of it is going to be paid with the ARPA, the senior son of ARPA money that was approved just last week. 15,000 will be paid for the Commission on Aging. The other 15,000 will be paid for with Youth and Family Services. So there was a lot going on, a lot of moving parts here. So this was my Thursday afternoon.
Mr. Beckich was the gentleman that spoke about the Tambari Estate.
Correct, correct. So, and everyone was in agreement with these numbers. So it appears there's, you know, some motions have to be made for cuts and also adjustments. Those are all, we were all in agreement with those, so everyone's on board with all those numbers. The 310,563 was where everyone was in agreement.
Okay, so
so now with that, and the cuts, that's why I handed a new giant worksheet for everybody. It's page 20 of 24, so it's probably easier to go to the back and flip four pages forward. And you'll see the adjustments there that tie back to the 310,563. And I can, I think I got that work paper up here too, if it's easier for everybody to I have it on the screen too. Same, same exact thing as your handout. Just not in color. So there's two, four, seven motions that need to be made.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to start then.
Okay.
All right. If there's any questions, just stop me. Okay. Move to transfer 15,064 dollars from Department 418 Commission on Aging, line item 311, to Department 425 Youth, Family and Human Services, line item 311, Program Coordinator/Admin, in order that the Youth and Family Services covers 25% of the social worker salary, which leaves a total of 51,064 dollars for Youth, Family and Human Services, line 311.
Correct. Okay, so you got to get a second or something like that.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
So those numbers didn't quite tie to this?
No.
Because we already did, nope, they tie in to, you have to do that. We already approved the $21,000, $500 cut last week.
Yes.
So the 21,000 negative plus the 15 gives us that, the number.
51,064.
Correct, yep, yep.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Being done, that motion carries.
Okay.
Good job, Ken.
All right, now I'm going to do some motions on the Commission on Aging just to basically solidify what we all discussed. So if there's questions, we'll take it from the top here. Okay, so move that for Department 418, line 213, Bus Driver 1. We reduce it by 9,063 dollars to bring it down to 59,873 dollars.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Being done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, it carries.
Okay. Move that for Department 418 Commission on Aging, line item 311, Admin Secretary/Bus Driver, be reduced by 15,017 dollars, which would bring it down to 160,053 dollars.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Being done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Being done, motion carries.
All right, move for Department 418 Commission on Aging, line item 239, Random Testing. We increase that by 520 dollars, which brings it up to 520 dollars.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Roseanne, any discussion? Being done, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, motion carries.
Okay. Move that for Department 418 Commission on Aging, line item 240, Vehicle Inspection. That we increase it by 140 dollars to bring it to a total of 680 dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roseanne, thank you. Any discussion? Being done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, motion carries.
Move that for Department 418 Commission on Aging, line item 241, Fleet Management. We increase it by 313 dollars for a total of 836 dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second. Any discussion?
Did you say increased by 313 dollars?
313 dollars.
That gets us up to the 836.
Up with it for a total of 836 dollars. It was 523, so they're increasing it by 313 to bring it to 836.
Okay.
Good.
Is that?
It was 523. It looks like it's 253.
It was 253 for 2,003.
That was 2,003.
Oh, okay.
And then we had, we changed the numbers, so now we're at 836.
Okay.
So that's
An increase of 313.
So any additional discussion? Being done, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Being done, it carries.
Okay. Move for Department 418 Commission on Aging, item 215, Program Services. We reduce it by 2,600 dollars, which would bring it down to zero.
That's not, wait a minute. 215?
It's two 215s.
Oh. Oh, yes, program. So it's maintenance and then it's
Program Services.
Program Services.
It's Program Services, so it's
I got it.
0101418300-215, Program Services.
And so what is the motion again? We're going to
Reduce it by 2,600 dollars, basically not fund it to zero.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? We need, oh, do we need a second?
I second.
Jason seconds? All right. If there's no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, that motion carries.
Okay. Move for Department 418 Commission on Aging, item 321, Program Supplies. We reduce it by 2,200 dollars, which would bring it down to zero.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. Any further discussion? Being done, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Move for Department 418 Commission on Aging, item 506, Program Subsidy. We reduce it by 2,000 dollars, which would bring it down to zero.
All right, those in favor, oh, do I hear a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Dan. All right, any discussion?
This is five, shoot, I'm sorry, I'm lost here.
It's 506, so it's 0101418500, 506.
We're bringing it to zero.
But the motion was to decrease it by 2,000?
Yeah, so it's going to be covered by, I forget what exactly.
The Tambari.
The Tambari Estate. So we're cutting it from this because it's going to be covered by the estate.
I'm sorry, I don't see where 2,000 dollars is reflected in the budget. I see 4,000, 3,000, 1,000.
I think we made changes
Correct.
the other day.
We don't, we don't have an updated book.
Yeah, we don't have that.
This is the, so we were, there was multiple versions before, so in, like, I didn't reconcile the first selectman proposed because all we did was work on the 310. So there's a little bit of reconciling difference there. So it's, yeah, 2,000 dollars. If we cut it 2,000, we'll be fine.
Okay, got it.
So now this is going to zero.
That's right.
Correct.
From 2,000.
Yeah.
Not 2,000.
It was 2,000. It says 3,000, but it was really a 2,000. We did some work last week and we, those, those numbers aren't reflected on this, but we are going to zero now.
The math teacher in me is just
No, I get you.
Yeah, no, no, it's good.
He makes it so these numbers line up.
Yeah, no, but they
There's too many columns on that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So they're going to have zero. And that's because we talked about the Tambari
The Tambari Estate. They received about 94,000.
So they'd rather use that money for these items rather than for payroll.
Okay.
So we're just accommodating those wishes. All right, so do we have a second? Okay, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No one's opposed? Motion carries. And that gets us to the, if we add all those changes up, that gets us to the 310,563 at the bottom of that column. And that's the number that we wanted to hit, hit down, hit, hit to. Okay. And let's see, and do we have to, did we already cover Youth and Family Services?
Yeah, I already did that, yep.
Yep.
So we are done with that portion of the budget. We now get to turn our attentions to the capital expenditures. And so Kevin and Ann and myself, we kind of went through line by line by line, and then they went even further today and again finding some other opportunities to make reductions and changes that would get us closer to where we really need to be. So what, I guess, what's the best way to approach this, do you think, Kevin? Just start changes, propose changes?
Yeah, I could talk about the few items that I've been working on to, and we can go one by one, if that works, everybody.
Yeah.
It's all right. Before we do that, could we set, just the purpose of this discussion is we're trying to determine how much, what's priority and what to bond and what to pay with cash capital.
I guess the first thing is to decide what projects we want to keep. And then the second part of the conversation will be funding sources. So I think, yeah, first one is, what do we want to, you know, keep in there?
At least that was my understanding, what's priority to make the list and what we could possibly
And what we can either cut or remove. That's what kind of we try to focus on.
Go through each section and see if there's some items that
Before you start, can I just ask you a quick question? How did you determine what is priority and what can be held off on until a different time? Like, did you have meetings with the director, the heads of the departments, or was there dialogue?
So, yeah, so this has been a couple months now of discussing with the department heads. Over the last couple days, I met with the department heads that have the majority of the capital items that are up for discussion. This morning, we met with emergency management, police, and IT to go over the radio tower and the three projects that kind of are within that. Conversations with land use, public works, parks and rec, the fire, the fire chiefs. So we've had input throughout the various, everyone that has any stake in this, we've discussed with them. So I have not prioritized, so I guess the, there's a problem I always run into is, is there's obviously a town priority list, but every department has their own priority list. So every department has, you know, their number one goal, so, or their number one, you know, item that they'd like to see. So we kind of tackled it both ways on what was, and I think the conversation this, this last couple day was, the last few days was, is this a want or a need?
Exactly.
Right? And so we really went through with a fine-tooth comb, you know, every capital project. And, and you'll see just in the first section, we really, we shaved down some of these projects to bare bones and maybe expand it over a couple-year period to just get the best return on our capital.
I appreciate, I appreciate the community.
I felt like leaving your last time.
I just kind of wanted to
How do you eat this?
We really tried hard to
Yeah, no, but I wanted it to be public.
Yeah, we don't surprise any
For people to know kind of how, you know, we're delineating things.
Yep, we don't want to, we didn't surprise any director. So for every, you know, every department, we went and said, what are your critical needs? Right? So we didn't, you know, Dan and I, in our conversations, we didn't, every department had nodes was coming on the pike. So with that, do we want to jump into the general government section?
Yeah, let's go.
So there's two, two cuts here that are proposed. The first one, the land use map digitization project, land use is comprised of building, zoning, planning, and about 15 other departments downstairs. So I just met recently with the office manager down there, Jess LaRocco, about half an hour ago to discuss the land use digitization of their maps and all of their records. Initially, I put the budget in a 75,000. That was from a few, probably about a year ago. That was the rumblings we were hearing from numbers. We don't have an exact dollar amount pinned down. Atkins, one of the vendors we use to do scanning and other municipal projects, quoted us 750 dollars for a banker box scanned and filed named by piece of paper, I guess. So the idea is to cut back from 75,000 to 65,000, so they have 10,000 dollars, which is essentially one and a quarter banker boxes a month to start scanning. And when I went downstairs, I said, what's the, what is your ability to do this project in a year if we gave you the 75,000? They're, the resources are very strained downstairs, so the idea was the 10,000 dollars was, was more than enough to kind of get the project off the ground, find a vendor, and start the process of digitizing so they can do, you know, a banker's box a month, put it together, send it off to get digitized and, and work from there. So we saved 65 right there.
So we saved 65,000.
So we're cutting
The second to last one, the general government, the proposal is to cut back from 75 to 10.
75,000 to 10?
Correct.
So we're cutting 65. Okay, yep, got it.
And the goal is, so next year, we'll probably come with a more, maybe 20 or 30 grand next year. But eventually, that office is a very good-sized office, and the idea would be to transition that into a conference room. So we'd have another room.
Good work.
And the other thing, doing a piecemeal like this sort of, is it forces them to start getting into what's down there in the boxes. And they may find, rather than say, come out and digitize everything, they may find, yeah, there's some things that are so old or superfluous, they can just get rid of some of those items. And they don't need to be scanned. So this kind of forces them to start the process and, and Kevin, what's the banker's box?
It was good work.
I just think it's a box of paper. I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
I think it's almost the handles, right?
Yeah, exactly, they're
So I think we can, I think the idea is, we, once we have a couple of the boxes, so maybe every quarter, we call Atkins, they come collect the boxes and then scan in, you know, four or five boxes at a time. So I think that's the plan downstairs there.
Do you have any idea how much they can fit in a box, like, with the
I don't, but if I showed you that room downstairs, it's, it's probably about half the size of this office, and it is chuck full of, Dan and I went in down there exploring.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going on a field trip someday.
That's a, that's a project.
Wear a mask.
Yeah.
And this is ostensibly an investment in office space and meeting room.
Yeah, potentially.
It's like a 10,000 dollar down payment on a new kind of space for municipal employees to do their job.
Yeah, eventually it'll result in that room being cleared out.
Yeah.
It may take a few years, but we'll see what 10,000 dollars does, and then we'll have a better sense of what it really is going to take.
Well, I think the real intent is to make these materials more accessible.
I think it's two-pronged, yes.
Yes.
So are we going to do motions after each one we discuss, or do you want to do, we got work?
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Okay, just so we're trying to, okay, so otherwise, I think I might get a little confused.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to move that for capital request under general government, land use map digitization project be cut by 65,000 dollars to a total of
10,000.
10,000 dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Next up is, it says IT, but really I spearheaded this. The conference room AV upgrades, the second conference room, that little TV, you know, I just think that room could use some audiovisual upgrades. I was the one who initially said, you know, 25,000, I think, would probably cover all of this. I had a brief conversation with the IT director. After having a second conversation, you know, highlighting our need here to cut back some capital items, he thinks 15,000 dollars should be more than adequate to give that room audiovisual capabilities to get us onto YouTube and have a better, better product than what, you know, the last budget meeting we had there the other night.
Kevin, where are you?
That is the last line in the general, right below the land use digitalization.
Okay, so instead of 25,000, it's going to be what?
We can cut it, we can cut it 10,000 dollars, cut it back to 15.
Okay.
Would that enable people
You go ahead. I think we're going to ask the same question.
Does it enable people to come in for Zoom meetings?
That's, that's the hope, to have, you know, a camera in the room, just like, very similar to this. So, you know, we're being streamed right now online. You can, there's, there's microphones. So ideally, it'd be a similar, similar mock-up to this, to a smaller degree, obviously.
So I mention this because I see that there's a real need for this, and we probably should have discussed it earlier. But as many of these grant opportunities are coming in, and you have to attend workshops, it's difficult for people to do these Zoom things by, from home and be able to have any communication about the decision-making, which has to be done at that point.
Yeah, this would be great for that. Just in, besides night meetings, during the daytime, you know, we have Zoom calls, you know, between Dan and I and my, the finance office, there'll be four people sitting behind me in a row. You know, it's the funniest thing ever, all trying to get FaceTime. You know, it's like, I'm here, oh, I'm over here. It's quite, it's quite a theatrics.
This would also provide accountability for the government, right? This, this would be recorded and showed on YouTube.
Correct, yep, all those meetings that are in there that right now, you know, probably don't get recorded.
So it'd be like this room light.
Yeah, that's the, that's the intent.
Yeah.
Yep, but ideally, I'd like either a projector or some sort of Promethean board. I mean, talk to the school, get an old one or something like that. Just update the IT.
Another place where we can conduct a meeting is smaller. Yep.
Okay, in that process, could we get new chairs for us and give them our old chairs?
Yes.
Hold on.
Let's get the budget approved first.
I think we can, Dan and I talked about that. The line, the line above that, the 10,000 dollars for office furniture replacement program. Some of these desks are 50 years old in Town Hall. I accidentally leaned on my deputy finance director's desk and split it today. And I didn't, I didn't sit on it, I just pushed on it and it snapped in half. So little things like that. So I, I think we could get six chairs.
Point onward, do we need to make seconds in order to have these discussions? Because I feel like we're doing
Did we second it yet?
I don't think we even
I didn't make a motion. I think we're just discussing it. We're just discussing it, but I'll make a motion.
Is that what we should do going forward on this?
Yeah, we're just trying
We're discussing it, and then I'll make a motion, and then you can always have more.
Just to lay the groundwork. Okay. All right, then I guess it's time for a motion.
Okay. Move that for capital request under general government, line item IT conference room AV upgrade be reduced by 10,000 dollars to 15,000 dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Thank you, Candace. Any further discussion? We talked about it a little bit. Anything further? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Emergency management. I don't think there was much there.
So we had nothing in emergency management. We had nothing in police. I just wanted to briefly, for Eastline Fire Service, I just wanted to broach the subject. The apparatus reserve, that wasn't an ask. That was something I've seen in prior communities I've worked in. In a lot of towns, most of them have some sort of reserve program, so that way you're not, you know, you don't get hit with a million-dollar or 2-million-dollar fire truck. You slowly accumulate it, and then you withdraw from the reserves. I don't know if this is the year to start a reserve. I know what we, you know, in conversations with the first selectman, we cut it back to 100,000. It was more of a conversation piece. So it's just something to keep on everyone's radars as we look at the, you know, go through the capital. I just wanted to bring that back up. It's just 100,000 dollars.
What do we do with the coastal reserve? It's 25,000?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Can I just ask you a quick question? For the deputy fire marshal vehicle for 75,000 dollars, do we already have one currently?
We do. It's a 2006. It does break down quite a bit. And the explorers that the, the two volunteer fire companies have are too small to store all to store all the marshal equipment in the back of it. So the current expedition has a, I just saw it the other day, he's got a piece of plywood in the back of it to fit all of his equipment in. So the idea would be to put him in a like-minded vehicle or an F-250 like the, the fire marshal has. And the idea would be that that older vehicle would be repurposed for the beach seasonal staff. So it's a large vehicle, it's an expedition. It does have high mileage, I think it has over a hundred thousand miles. But the, the people that would be using this vehicle, you know, are grabbing a bunch of, you know, beach equipment, things like that, throwing it in the back and driving it a mile down, down to the road. So we figured, you know, two birds, one stone. The emergency responder gets his new vehicle, and the parks and rec also gets another vehicle.
Yeah, it's a good repurposing of that vehicle. You know, if the old pickup truck breaks down with a bunch of beach stuff, that's a little different than someone responding to a fire breaking down. So we think it's a great way to reuse it, and if it's near the beach, it gets salt and corrosion on it, it's already older and.
Now, is that vehicle only being used when?
It's in use right now by the fire.
Are we talking about the deputy fire marshal vehicle? That's, he actively drives that around. That's his on-call vehicle, on-call?
On-call, yes. We already got this discussion.
Yep, yep, on, on, on-call or.
That's okay.
Duty car?
No questions.
Duty car?
Thank you.
So we got a good use for it.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
And, so do we want to go to the, there's some other proposed cuts here?
I think on the second page, right?
Yep, second page, yep. Yep, and so I don't have anything really with public works. Oh, there is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there are two things with public works, I looked in my wrong note section. Repair, yep, so we're gonna look right beneath that nine hu, I'm sorry, no, this wasn't on, guys. I had it up on the board, the screen, so everyone could see at home as well. Okay. Okay, so we are looking at the roof projects. So the ELCC, the community center roof, I believe we voted on moving that nine hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken last time?
Yes, we did.
After conversations with Mr. Burgaw, excuse me, he feels comfortable, we can delay the Nyanix Station Two roof one more year as well. As long as we give him the ten thousand dollars, you know, God forbid there's a hole that pops up, we can patch it. He feels confident, one more year, we could get out of that roof. So if we can, if we can move, we could, we could drop that two hundred thousand there as well and delay that one more year.
Okay. Can I make a motion there? All right. Move that for capital request under building and infrastructure line item repair town building roofs, NFD Station Two, not be funded or reduced by two hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Being done, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
All right, so the next one we need to talk about, plants dam, I believe Mr. Burgaw was here. He was on Wednesday, we discussed this. We are looking for ninety-five thousand dollars for the plant stand, for the town's contribution. I know it says steep contribution, but really, it's the town contribution towards the steep grant. So I just should rewrite that.
And I thought the steep grant was like seven hundred thousand or something?
It's, it's a, yeah, I don't know exactly off the top.
And I think the town has to put in ninety-five, yeah, so.
So ninety-five gets you.
Yeah.
I have ninety-three in my notes right now.
Might be.
I think they rounded up.
Yeah, I think it was ninety-three, but God forbid the project jumps up a little bit, we don't have anywhere to cover it. So I think the idea was ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, exactly.
But I did have ninety-three before, too, because.
But, just, so in the ten-year capital plan, I believe Joe said it was either seven fifty or nine fifty he put in. So the fact that we're paying ninety-five this year saves us three quarters of a million dollars in the next couple of years for the ten-year CIB.
That is a good deal.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that for capital request under buildings and infrastructure line item plant stand dash steep contribution be funded for ninety-five thousand dollars or increased from zero to ninety-five thousand dollars.
Do I hear a second? One second, all right, thank you. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, being none, motion carries. I think that does it for that section. Unless there was, was there something else?
Oh. That's all I had for that section.
Parks and maintenance, huh?
That's the, yeah, so on page two, so still on page two, there's a few changes here. So the first change, the recommendation of the engineering department is to increase the cost of the wall by a hundred thousand dollars to four hundred thousand to combat rising sea level, to combat sea level rise. So the wall is, instead of, I don't know if anyone's been down with the wall, it's a flat. So the idea is it's gonna be a little higher and it's gonna wrap to the, around. So that's about as much as you're gonna get out of this bean counter. So the idea was.
They want to bring it around so, so the water can't ride up and get behind it. And so you really need to make it more very.
Robust.
Modifying you, like the letter C maybe, shape as opposed to straight line, yep.
So now we're gonna add another hundred thousand dollars back in. So we decreased two hundred thousand dollars, and then we just added more money back in.
But wait, there's more.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so I can make a motion on this?
It, well, you know, that's all I had to add to that.
Any other discussion on this, I guess maybe is the question?
Maybe you should make the motion, and then we'll.
Okay, got it. Move that for capital request under parks and maintenance line item cookse wall repair and replace be increased by one hundred thousand dollars or increased from three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand.
Do I hear a second? I'll second, okay, thank you. Any additional discussion now on this item?
I see that this is a twenty-year project, that the useful life of this is going to, is anticipated to be twenty years?
Well, it.
It might have been a placeholder, that might, yeah, and that's exactly, it's for the twenty-year bond purpose. Has to be at least twenty years in order to bond it for that long. I'm, I'm sure they're hoping for fifty out of it.
Yeah.
A little bit more bang for our buck.
If they don't get fifty, come back and see me.
Sure.
Yeah. All right. All right, any other discussion? But I mean, you know, we really want to do it right, if we're gonna spend three hundred, let's spend what we have to spend so we're not faced again, having that wall washed out, so. All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, being none, motion carries. Okay.
Two more.
We, we have a couple more? I'm just trying to pull the work paper real quick.
Yep.
So the next one's gonna relate back to ARPA. I'm just trying to pull up the ARPA, on eighty-five, here we go, okay. Okay, so in the ARPA budget, I'm just gonna highlight this so everyone can see it here. Park and Rec had a, an initial project of a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to re, for park and rec restroom enhancements at parks.
This is ARPA, correct?
This is ARPA, this has already been approved, so if we look over at, you know, our list, there's fifty thousand dollars for restroom improvements. That sounds like this is perfect. Jerry called me, we had a conversation today about this. So our proposal is to drop the fifty thousand dollar project and pay for it with this tranche of cash. So this is, this fits right in, it's exactly the purpose of this. It just kind of slipped past us all.
That is a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars?
Correct, so they've already spent sixteen, almost seventeen thousand, we have twenty thousand encumbered. So there's a hundred twenty thousand left. That will cover, so I guess we can talk two things at once. The fifty thousand will drop the remaining balance to seventy-eight thousand dollars. Our proposal is to close that out after that. That'll leave the seventy thousand dollars in the, you know, fund balance of, of ARPA. And the idea is Parks and Rec would come back before the Board of Selectmen, you know, next couple of meetings. They'd come back and ask for that money to be re-appropriated out of this line. We'd, we'd close this project, and we would ask for the seventy-eight thousand that is left to go into the field renovations line. So the proposal is to drop the fifty thousand for restroom improvements as well as the seventy-five thousand for field renovations. So while we did add a hundred thousand in the seawall, we took out a hundred and twenty-five. So that.
And this would not run afoul of ARPA, correct?
Say that again?
This would not run afoul of the conditions of the ARPA grant.
Nope, we would, we'd get a legal, yeah, we'd get a legal opinion from Tracy Collins. But just reading the grant and knowing what the, the specificities of it are, this would definitely fit in.
So we would reduce this by seventy-five?
Uh, one twenty-five. We would reduce the fifty and the seventy-five.
By fifty and seventy-five.
Yep, so I, we, I did, I kind of talked about two at once there. But I just wanted to, so everyone knew where, where this was coming from.
I'll do two separate motions, just to make it clear, okay.
Does everybody understand that, are we?
I understand.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Okay, good.
Move that for capital request under parks and maintenance line item restroom improvements parentheses septic be reduced by fifty thousand dollars to zero.
Second motion.
All right, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, being none, motion carries.
Okay. Move that for capital request under parks and maintenance, field renovations be reduced by seventy-five thousand dollars to zero.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Jason, thank you. Any further discussion?
What field renovations are those, Anne?
Pardon me?
What field renovations are those, are those the lights?
Not the lights, but other than the goalposts for the.
Nope, so those are the act, the actual field itself, it's to re-level the fields to actually like, all the bumps in the field. It's been years, I guess, since they've actually been, you know, scraped and leveled from, from what it sounds like to me. But I would, I would talk to Jerry Locken for more details there.
But it sounds like it's necessary, it's overdue, and this is the way to do it. Any, any further questions? All right, being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, being none, motion carries. Is that it?
The only other one I, I just had highlighted there was just the pickleball court lights.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that.
I, I didn't have anything to add to it, I just had it highlighted there.
What's that, a hundred thousand? Any?
I kind of see the pickleball lights at this time as more of a want versus a need.
I agree.
You know, they, they have the pickleball courts, if you need it, we can do it in another year. I mean, this is a really tight budget.
They're illuminated now, right? What's that, they are illuminated now, correct?
I don't think they're fully constructed yet, are they?
Are they, are they made? I don't even know.
I don't, I don't know if they're under, I don't know if they're fully constructed.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So.
I don't believe there was lights in the initial design. I think that was for the construction of the courts, not with the lights.
You know, maybe, maybe this is something we can adjust. There's so many essential things that we're dealing with. A little bit of luxury. But I'll, there's a motion, I'll entertain a motion, if someone is interested.
All right.
Just a question for knowledge.
Yep, I'll move that for capital request under park and maintenance line item basketball slash pickleball court lights be reduced by one hundred thousand dollars to zero.
Do I hear a second? Is it?
Second.
Wait, Roseanne's second? All right, well, we talked about it a little bit, is there any further discussion? Who do I have a problem? I think it's appropriate. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I don't think that we're permitted, right, to do anything with the school capital improvement plan. I think, isn't that the, the purview of the Board of Finance?
We can make recommendations.
We can make recommendations.
Recommendations, okay.
So I did get a legal opinion on this at four-thirty, I haven't read it yet. On whether the Board of Selectmen can cut the board of ed, because there was a question that came up last. So I haven't read it yet, so I, I can't answer it.
We have been told in the past that we could not, but we could make recommendations to, we could make recommendations.
Would you like to take five minutes to?
Yeah, can we take a five-minute break and just?
Yeah, we can. Want to recess for five minutes?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we can look at that opinion if we have it.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion to recess?
Yeah, make a motion to recess at five forty-five for five, ten minutes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're back on the record. This is, we're coming off of our recess, and it is five fifty-four. And we are going to turn our attention to the Board of Education capital summary. We have just reviewed a legal opinion that states that the town may, does have authority only over the capital expenditures of the Board of Education budget. It does not have authority over their operating budget. So we're looking now at the capital expenditures portion of their budget. So based on this opinion, it appears that if we were of a mind to make adjustments, we have the authority to do it. So with that, I guess we'll open the floor here to any suggestions or?
I'd like to make a suggestion, because my understanding, Kevin, is that you have had dialogue with each head of the department that we have cut from tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm assuming you have not had any dialogue with Mr. Newman?
Correct.
Would you like to contact him to give him the opportunity to come here or to have some sort of communication with this board prior to either having anything cut to their capital improvement plan and/or just to have discussion like you've given everyone else?
My mic's still crashed.
I think it's fair to give him the opportunity, or Mariana, or someone of that nature to be able to go through and say what's priority for them and what possibly may not, or?
I believe I asked the question if they would give us a priority order, if they had a priority on the capitals. And I don't believe we got a response.
I remember asking the board chair what his three priorities are. They were the library, the locker room, and?
There's one other one.
Library, locker room, and?
Quiet at the light, oh.
All right, I haven't written it down.
Is the library even here?
I don't believe that it is.
Yeah.
I don't see it, I don't think it's all applicable.
Oh, the auditorium, we went to.
Improvement to auditorium, that's right.
So I don't, I don't think those appear in this priority list.
They're not broken out.
So I guess the only thing, I, I don't know if we can get in touch with Mariana or Jeff or what have you. The only thing that I would say that I think could be put off is the artificial turf replacement. I do remember them saying that it was eleven years old and it had like a useful life. It says here twelve, but I do remember them saying, I, I remember hearing fifteen. And I think that could be pushed another year. I don't know about the others, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge to, to cut any of the, anything else. But that one, I, I feel confident in saying, yes, I think that could be cut. And I think that maybe what, you know, the board of ed should do is present all of these in detail to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, that's right.
Because, you know, right now, this is due basically tonight, we're supposed to finish this budget tonight. And I don't think, I personally don't feel like I have enough information and I would just basically abstain from voting because I, I just don't feel like I have enough information on things. So, not that they didn't present, but I, I just don't think there was enough detail to, to actually start, you know, saying, you know, we need a new roof on this school or not. You know, I, I know they're saying it, I don't know, I, you know, we just don't have any details. So that's the only thing that I, that, that I would consider cutting just based on, on my lack of knowledge and information at the present moment.
I'd like to suggest another recess to take an opportunity to try to contact the superintendent. That way they can have some sort of dialogue before anyone puts a motion on this board or on this table to make a cut. That's what I would like to do. I don't think that any of us really have the knowledge enough. of us really have the knowledge enough to look at any of these things on the list to say whether or not it's a priority or not.
So, so, there's a motion on the table, take a recess. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, being none, the motion carries. All right. And Superintendent Newton is here. So, we, we, thank you for making, coming down here tonight, we appreciate that. And we, we did have some questions on the capital plan, and there was a suggestion that, you know, that perhaps the artificial turf replacement could be delayed a year. And be interested in, in what your thoughts are on that, and any insight that you could share with the board.
Yeah, I, a year would be, okay, we're anticipating probably a year or, or even two with that, but no more, no further out than, than, than that. That falls, still falls in that window of replacement.
Yeah, that's what I remember you saying.
Yeah, yup.
So, if we delayed, if we, if we moved, if we took that off of this year, and then next year we revisit it?
Yeah, as long as we-
You would be, you would be okay with that?
Yeah, one year would be, would be okay.
That means that then we would have to increase next year's amount to reflect that?
We would.
The, yeah, the cost of the turf itself, if it goes up, is that what you're saying, Roseanne? Potentially, yeah. I don't know what it would be, you know, at that time, but potentially-
What I'm asking is, are we just gonna push the whole thing forward, or are you going to expect double next year to make up for this cut?
I'm not following you. What do you mean, double?
Well, in other words, if we take these, how are you gonna make up this money? Are we going to then just move everything forward?
You're, you're pushing it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would push it out one year.
Yeah.
And then whatever we do, let's see how we look next year, and, you know, bonding and where we are.
Yeah, those roof projects are, the more important ones.
So, I just wanna take the opportunity to give you a little bit of context, because the other night when we had met, we started to kind of dive into the capital improvement plan, and kind of talking about priorities, what's absolutely needed, and then the wants, right, needs, wants. And I know you're very familiar with that. So, the other department heads were given the opportunity to have dialogue with Kevin, to kind of take a look at what their priorities were. Then, there was a question and a dive into what the Board of Selectmen can do with the Board of Education's capital improvement, and if it was just making recommendations and/or cutting. So, when that came up, I had asked if, you know, we could take the opportunity to allow you to come in to have dialogue in some way, whether I be on the phone or here, to give your, you know, priorities.
Yeah, appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, to give the time.
Yeah, I didn't know, yeah, I didn't know you were, you're having those conversations, so thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for, uh-
Well, just to follow up too on Candace, we did actually, Mr. Gervais requested a letter from Town Council to say that we're allowed actually, because we weren't sure if we were allowed to kind of touch the Board of Ed capital improvement plan-
Before it goes to the Board of Finance.
Before it goes to Board of Finance.
Gotcha, okay.
So, that's kind of how this all came about. And so-
Do you want a copy, can we give him a copy, or no, of that?
Oh, yeah.
Just so he knows.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, we just got it, we took a break, and we all read it, and then we kind of contacted you, because now it's like, okay, this is kind of more on our turf now, so to speak.
This part?
Yeah.
I just got that at four thirty?
Yeah, we just, we just took a break about twenty minutes ago and got this, and then called you, basically. So, that, that's kind of where this is, is coming from.
Okay.
Also, first of all, thank you for coming. It's like Batman, you know, you show the symbol, and you just-
Well, good, good timing. I was pulling in my driveway and I turned around, so.
Yeah, right out. I do wanna ask though, there were some priorities laid out by the Board Chair, Mr. Bowman, locker room, auditorium, and library, which are not reflected in the capital.
No, those aren't in capital, those are things that are just starting to be looked at. That high school is going to become the next piece that we're gonna be pushing forward, yeah, potentially with renovation. That's why I'm concerned, I don't want projects to start to back up, and we start to get some of these things done, because that, that's next on our radar. You know, the middle school's in good shape still, we can push that out many, many years before having to potentially renovate. The elementary schools are now done, other than these two roof projects. But then it's, we turn our attention to the high school. So, just trying to space these out, you know, for the town.
That's right. That's why it's important to get these roof projects done and protect them as much as possible.
Correct, yup. And then we can put them today.
So, just on the roof replacements, Lily Behanes and Nianic Center, do you know ballpark how old the roofs are, and are they like actively leaking?
Yes, they're, they're actively leaking, yes. And Lily Behanes especially, I know you saw that diagram that had all the red, you know, the hot spot, hot spots, if you wanna call them, where water is already infiltrated. So, we're worried about the next membrane down becoming damaged, and having, you know, the cost of, you know, further repairs, sort of things, so.
And also mold.
And also, yeah, potentially mold, yeah. Yup, because things are dripping, things are leaking.
Yeah.
Exactly, and that's a big, a big item, so thank you, Candace. The roofs, I don't know the exact age, but they're both over twenty years old now, probably around that twenty-four to twenty-five range. And Lily Behanes has been piecemealed some too. So, but they're, they're now eligible too for the reimbursement, forty percent from the state, which is an important number, so that we get that reimbursement. So, it's, you know, almost half the cost of the roof that we can get back from the Department of Commerce.
My other question is, are these like bids, or are these just like numbers you're throwing out, or like, how do these-
I'd have to circle back with Crystals, and he tries to get accurate numbers and reflections of, of the dollar cost. They're, they're not gonna be, you know, spot on, but we can get some further-
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, just so, okay.
Yup, some further clarity if, you know, as we move forward with, with exact costs.
Who, that forty percent, when that comes back, because this is a capital expenditure, that would go to us, or would that-
Yeah, it all works through, through the town finances, yeah.
So, my Excel file just keeps crashing, so we're not gonna be able to put any more formulas in there. So, the three schools, Lily, well, the three roof projects, Lily Behanes, Nianic Center, the aquatics, the state would pick up two million six hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars. The town would be, their portion would be three million nine hundred thirty thousand one oh eight. So, it's under, under four million dollars.
For all, all three?
For all three, correct. Yup. So, the, so state picks up two point seven, town picks up just shy of four.
But that isn't reflected within this capital-
It's not, because the entire amount has to be approved, and also has to be authorized by, in bonds. But we just won't, when we actually go to take bonds out, we won't take out the money that the state's gonna pay us back.
Okay.
So, it's not like we pay, and then we get reimbursed? We, we don't even have to put out that forty percent?
Yes, we'll have to put it out. We'll put it out, and then you, you, the, the state comes in, audits you, and then they send back the, they send us the money.
But we wouldn't bond it, though.
Um, no.
No, we would, we would, the portion that we're not bonding, we'd have to take out of our cash.
We don't, we don't take it out, we just float it.
We float it, until we get paid.
Until we get the reimbursement.
Kevin, is the roof life extension on the middle school, is that also encompassed in this forty percent reimbursement project that the state's offering, because it's a roof project?
Uh, I'm, I'm, is that the three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar one?
No.
I can look, I did not, I'm sure it is.
I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe it, because it's not-
It's so small.
Yeah, it's, and it's a, it's just a membrane layer that they're putting down to extend the, the life of the roof, it's a last phase. We've already done the other phases. I don't believe those are reimbursable.
Yeah, I did not, I did not include that in this.
To get the forty percent back, do you actually have to put the roof, new roof on, and then they like look at it, and then say, okay, here's the forty percent?
Exactly, and then the final, yeah, all the final information goes to the state, and then, yeah.
I figured as much, if it's a state.
It's not gonna be a quick turnaround. It's gonna take a while.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Yeah, we're still closing out the elementary schools.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's huge.
Yeah, it's, it's a big, yeah. And, and when we did the elementary schools, it was forty-three percent. So, it's dropped a little bit, so, you know, we don't wanna see it drop any further as we extend out years.
Well, maybe we should make a motion to amend this capital expenditures project? I don't know, do you want us to do something?
Does someone wanna make a motion to take out the artificial turf replacement, and we'll revisit that next year?
Okay. Move that for capital request under education, district-wide, artificial turf replacement with track decapitalization be reduced by one, one million two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which would bring that down to zero.
I'll second.
You have a second? All right. Any further discussion? I wanna thank Superintendent Newton for coming out tonight and helping us understand it. Thank you.
No, my pleasure, thanks.
It was a busy evening, and-
Appreciate you.
No, we wanna get it right, that's all.
Yeah.
All right. So, if there's no further discussion, we do have a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, being none, the motion carries. I think that does it, right?
Can I just ask one other question? Now I'll let you go home. Technology and other capital items for the Board of Ed. Did, do you know what that covers? Is that just, is that computers, is that-
Is that like the acquisition items, or is-
I, I didn't know what it was.
That's, that's the acquisition, yeah. That, those are laptop, the laptop replacement cycle that we have.
That you started during the period?
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right, 'cause I saw the five hundred thousand, it kinda-
Yup, that's the acquisition plan.
Okay, and that continues every year?
It continues every year. There's a hundred thousand in our operating budget that covers the cost each year that we pay back, and it's, it's all the computers.
Is this to, to pay for the computers, or is it licensing, or like?
It's, it's repurchasing. So, when they've used up their life expectancy, we're rotating through. So, we've got a whole schedule of grade levels that we do replacements for, and we're coming up on the need for replacements.
So, they're always up to date with the-
They're always, exactly, and we don't have a one huge hit.
So, you're not-
Yeah, we cycle through, yup.
Okay, great. All right, that, that was all the questions I had.
All right, I think we're good.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
They sent that to you electronically.
Okay, thanks a lot, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
So, Roseanne, I think there was something you wanted to revisit in the budget.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to, if I need to make a motion, if we can just do it, to relook at number one one five, services to the community.
Services to the community.
A way for people to find one five.
I don't, I don't know.
Donation. Services to the community.
Oh, yeah, one one five, link it to, okay.
Right, there.
Okay, so considering that there were some questions about the procedure for giving grants to these agencies, in the past, it has been that they would write a letter requesting assistance directed to the Board of Selectmen with, you know, a letter stating the objective, rationale, et cetera. We did not receive these for the two most recent requests, nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five. They've just appeared in our budget booklet. So, I'm going to go first with nine three four. And I took some time to review this, and I'm familiar with how all of these, beginning with nine oh one, I know exactly how each one of those things were decided upon, and whether they were, you know, initially. So, once you, once you applied, and it was, the money was given by the board unless services changed, then there was no need to write that request letter every year. That was just ongoing. Unless, if you look at two thousand and three, twenty-three, and you see what the funding was then, if the funding increased, it was only by the percentage that the budget increased, or in a couple of cases, because of changed circumstances. Now, from this list, there had been previous items on there, but those items have been dropped, either because the, the money was incorporated into another department, or a new department was created, or there was no longer any need for that funding, either because the, the donor request was, was no longer appropriate. So, to me, it seems that if we were to take money away from these existing requests, then, then that's money lost. That's kind of my opinion, going back on a promise. These two new accounts, we received requests, we received no request letter. And if you look, over time, let's take, for instance, just the student government scholarship. That was a thousand dollars for probably fifteen years. Until just last year, we could get it raised by a thousand dollars. Now, we have a grant coming in right off the bat for twenty, for two thousand dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars. So, nine three four, the youth coalition scholarship. This is money that's being requested by an existing town, town department. None of these other grants are from an existing town department. So, this sets a new standard, shall we say. And I have some concern for this, because this money originally appeared
I think that does it, right?
Can I just ask one other question? Now I'll let you go home. Technology and other capital items for the Board of Ed, can, do you know what that covers? Is that just, is that computers, is that?
Is that like the acquisition items or is?
I, I didn't know what it was.
That's the acquisition items, yeah, that, those are laptop, the laptop replacement cycle that we have.
That you started during the period?
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right, because I saw the five hundred thousand, it kind of.
Yep, that's the acquisition plan.
Okay, and that continues every year?
It continues every year, there's a hundred thousand in our operating budget that covers the cost each year, um, that we pay back, and, uh, it's, it's all the computers.
Is this to, to pay for the computers or is it licensing or like?
It's, it's repurchasing, so when they've used up their life expectancy, we're rotating through. So, we've got a whole schedule of grade levels, um, that we do replacements for, and we're coming up on the need for replacements.
So, they're always up to date with?
They're always, exactly, and we don't have a one huge hit, uh, yeah, we cycle through, yep.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, that, that was all the questions I had.
All right, I think we're good.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I sent that to you electronically.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it, Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, Roseanne, I think there was something you wanted to revisit in the, uh, in the budget?
Yes, I would like to, um, make a motion to, if I need to make a motion, if we can just do it, to relook at number one one five, Services to the Community.
Services to the Community.
A way to be called fine one five.
I don't know.
Donation. Uh, Services to the Community.
Oh, yeah, one one five, right up to, okay.
Right, there.
Okay, so considering that there were some questions about the procedure for, uh, giving grants to these agencies, uh, in the past, it has been that they would write a letter requesting assistance directed to the Board of Selectmen with, uh, you know, a letter stating the objective, the rationale, et cetera. We did not receive these for the two most recent requests, nine, nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five. They've just appeared in our budget booklet. So, I'm going to go first with nine three four, and I took some time to review this, and I'm familiar with how all of these, beginning with nine oh one, I know exactly how each one of those things were decided upon and whether they were, um, you know, initially, so once you, once you applied and it was, the money was given by the board unless services, um, changed, then there was no need to write that request letter every year, that was just ongoing. Unless, if you look at two thousand and three, twenty-three, and you see what the funding was then, if the funding increased, it was only by the percentage that the budget increased, or in a couple of cases, because of changed circumstances. Now, from this list, there had been previous items on there, but those items have been dropped, either because the, the money was incorporated into another department or a new department was created, or there was no longer any need for that funding, either because, uh, the, the donor request was, was no longer appropriate. So, to me, it seems that if we were to take money away from these existing requests, then, then that's money lost. That's kind of my opinion going back on a promise. These two new accounts, we receive requests, we received no request letter, and if you look over time, let's take, for instance, just the Student Government Scholarship, that was a thousand dollars for probably fifteen years. Until just last year, we could get it raised by a thousand dollars. Now, we have a grant coming in right off the bat for twenty, for two thousand dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars. So, nine three four, the Youth Coalition Scholarship, this is money that's being requested by an existing town, town department. None of these other grants are from an existing town department. So, this sets a new, uh, standard, shall we say. And, uh, I have some concern for this, because this money originally appeared in the Youth and Human Services Department, and then that money was removed from their department, and now brought over to Services to the Community. So, if that was something that they felt needed, I feel that it should have been continued to be included in their budget. So, that's definitely sets a new precedent if we're going to let existing departments now request additional funds under Services to the Community. Not that I don't think this is a worthy cause. And then nine three four, the request from the East Line Cadet, uh, Cadets, all right, so we have a request for them. Well, the Fire Department has a, a youth program. So, if we give it to, if we give to the Police Cadets, are we now going to play fair game and give money to the Fire Department for their youth program and their, uh, youth volunteers? So, I think that these two items, uh, first of all, nine three four, I do not think is appropriate, that should go back in their own budget. The Police Cadets, if this is something that we want to start, then I definitely think that it should be at a lower funding. And, um, and again, taking into consideration that, in fairness, if we do for them, then should we also do for the same program, the, so, the Fire Department? Now, this may seem like this is a relatively small amount of money, but considering what we put other departments through and eliminated money from their budgets, and the amount of time that we spent on the Commission on Aging Budget for four hundred dollars, then it seems to me that this, this, in my opinion, two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars is a considerable amount of money, considering what we've gone through with our other budget requests. So, if people feel that they want to have a more finite process for applying for money after this point, then that's maybe something that a subcommittee could take on, um, for next year's budget. That's it, I'm done.
Thanks for that, Roseanne. Yeah, I mean, now, I think that, um, that is a pretty impactful, um, this is going to create a pretty impactful dialogue, so first, there is no, no doubt that this needs a process, and I'm a little surprised that there isn't one, other than what you said.
Well, the process was quite simple. Write a letter.
I understand. Now.
We don't have to have ten pages of budget material.
How, how, how did these two make the list if nobody saw a letter? Who put it on the list? Or did somebody receive a letter and maybe we just didn't see it? I, I don't know, I'm, that's, I'm just pondering the questions.
It's about the process.
Thank you. So, that's why I asked for a process, right, it's the same reason I asked for a Capital Improvement Commission, that maybe have a process. Uh, but then going back to Ann's question, which was a wonderful spot-on question regarding this high, the whole entire sheet is whether or not that's something that we should be doing or not, right? Ponders that question, and then, well, we've always done something that's always been done, historically, this has always been done. Well, if it's always been done, I guess the question would be, well, is it really something that should continue and or not? So, we're going to look at taking the two thousand off, the two thousand five hundred off, or we could take a look at taking the whole entire page off, until there's an actual process that's put into place.
But my point is, there was an actual process.
Excuse me, possibly, possibly with just the, um, uh, not doing the homeless shelter, because I think that that's a regional thing. I mean, the, the question that Ann put out was so spot-on, and then the conversation started to take a different turn about how this actually goes onto this sheet and it actually comes to us. So, now, we want to take off or possibly consider removing nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five, which is equaling forty-five hundred dollars, or maybe it should just be sidelined for this year and the whole entire thing. That would save us almost forty-five thousand dollars.
Uh, I don't think that would save us money, because.
No?
If we don't, um, contribute to some of these organizations, we're mandated to have some kind of apparatus in place, and we would need to create something new, if we feel we wish.
And that would be the regional, is that the nine oh six, is that what we have to?
Well, I, there's the veteran, uh, mileage reimbursement also, um, so, I, I would go gently with this rather than kind of remove entire, um, entire page, just so we don't run into trouble later, because it could cost us more money.
Right, so gently. Agreed, so, coming back around for gently, which I like, um, the last conversation that we had specifically about these two, nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five, and it was actually put out to see if we were going to take it off and or not, and I think it was even voted on. Was it voted on, Ann, do you remember? Because I think Roseanne brought it up.
I think we voted, but I don't remember exactly what the.
Um, and it was not to take them off. But it is next year to look forward to an actual process that's in place, um, so we have it.
Well, I'm going to have to say that I think it's still a major error to begin to give an existing department donated money, considering that that was in their budget and then was removed.
So, how did that actually work? Because I, I'm, I don't know, so can you help me on that? Because, so, was the two thousand, are you saying that the two thousand dollars was in the original budget that they came forward with, and then Dan took it out, and then it found its way onto the Services to Community?
It was transferred.
Yeah, I think that's what we did, they needed, and it got put on here as a way of getting it out of their budget, but still giving them a service. I guess we could, uh, do we pull it out of this and put it back in their budget, or just?
I think that that would be, well, just hypothetically speaking, it would possibly be fair, since, um, the Youth and Family was considerably cut. So, they originally asked for, I won't go on memory here, and I'm going to find it, um, a hundred, let me get to my little sheet, give me. Give me patience, patience. Um, let's see, the head requested, am I on the right one? I hope I am, a hundred and three thousand. And then Dan, uh, proposed fifty-seven five, and then Ann requested to decrease to thirty-six, and they made it to thirty-six.
And then it went back up. No, but then we just did another motion that brought it up to, oh, hang on a minute, where's that motion?
So, this, the two thousand dollars was in?
To fifty.
The Supplies and Services line?
Okay, so wait, one thing at a time, so Ann continued, you're saying?
We, I made another motion here.
Just now.
Earlier this evening.
Right.
That increased it.
Back.
Up to, and I, I don't see my piece of paper. Sorry, I've just got a lot of papers.
I'm trying to go on memory, do you remember the exact amount? Was it fifty-five or fifty-seven?
The, the, uh, first selectman brought, proposed to you guys fifty-seven, five hundred, that was cut back by twenty-one thousand, five hundred. On Wednesday, tonight, we added back fifteen thousand, sixty-four dollars, bringing the total to line three eleven to fifty-one thousand, sixty-four dollars.
Okay.
So, this isn't even needed anymore then?
So, can?
This two thousand dollars is superfluous?
So, to go back to what Dan had asked, can we move the two thousand dollars that is on the Services to Community back into their budget? Because, um, I think that Roseanne does have a, a, a point, right? We're setting precedence, and that's not something that we want to do, right?
No, I, I agree with Roseanne's, um, concern on this line item.
Yes, yeah.
And I think the way to alleviate that concern, uh, would be either to eliminate it or, um, perhaps to eliminate it there and then plug it back into, um, line three to, three eleven and make an additional motion, or because we did increase it, maybe they have enough and they don't really need it now, I don't know.
I would guesstimate, and then, of course, I, I can't speak for that head, I can't do that, but considering just the knowledge of the impact that it was going to have on that commission, to have the first cut, then the second cut, um, and then to have the fifteen thousand brought back in, which is generous, and I think that people will be very thankful for that, um, then additionally, to put the two thousand dollars back into their operating budget would be fair. And I would, I would be in support of that.
Uh, did you want to make a motion?
Well, I don't think, though, it would go under three eleven, though. I, I, I'm not sure, I, I mean, I can make a motion, but I need to, well, that's what I'm trying to.
That's not a wages line, that is the Supplies and Services line, so that, so really, the reason why it ended up in one fifteen is that's the appropriate home for it. It's a service to the community, it's not a supply or a service, it's a scholarship, and so the other scholarships, that's, that's, that's the, the rationale, I had to move it there in the, the first selectman meeting, because we have the East Line Student Government Scholarship here, so I think it's, it, I think it was more appropriate to have it in this line with the other scholarships than in a supply line in Youth and Family Services.
But the East Line Scholarship Association is supported by fundraising and outside organizations, it's not town funds.
That two thousand dollars is town taxpayer money.
This two thousand.
That, this.
No, the other two thousand.
This line right here, line nine thirteen, that says EL Student Government Scholarship, that two thousand dollars is taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, so we're not setting precedents with the Youth Coalition Scholarship with changes.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Well, for not setting a precedent.
No, this precedent is that that is coming, that is coming to an outside organization as opposed to a town government agency.
I see what you're saying, okay, all right.
So, what? So, the East Line Student Government Scholarship.
That's an outside organization versus a, a, a department in town, is what Roseanne's saying, which makes sense. I, I didn't really quite understand what she was saying last week.
So, then I think it's a concern, it's a, right?
Yeah, I think it is.
So, how do we, how do we preserve it as a scholarship? Is there a way to do this, Kevin, to move it back into their budget somewhere, where?
You could move it back in there, it's just, it's just, you know, um, you know, when we report, we're going to report, um, Supplies and Services, and there's going to be a scholarship in there. It's not a, it's not a, and it's two thousand dollars in a ninety-two million dollar budget. This isn't a, um.
So, maybe it would be a net.
Yeah, I, yeah.
It would just be really.
Well, come out of here and go over there.
Yeah. Not, not to jump, change horses in midstream, but the East Line Police Cadets Incorporated, that's a separate entity, I imagine, than the police.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, could we ask that the Youth Coalition absorb this for this year, and in the meantime, consider having them create some kind of incorporation outside of themselves that can fund this? Or that we can give money to?
I don't think it asks them to do it, someone could set up a scholarship, I'm not sure how that would work, I don't know. I think, um, I would think for the, I don't know, there's a lot of moving parts there.
I don't know, I don't want to ask for another recess and go to the.
Can I throw, can I throw a third option again?
My, my, um, my feeling is, uh, for what it's worth, uh, I think if we could move that two thousand out of the Youth Coalition Scholarship, and we can find a line of item to, as, as a placekeeper for it, so that they can have, have set up some sort of a scholarship, so it's a net impact on the budget. It gets rid of my concern that, uh, which I think is legitimate, that we're now taking taxpayer money and out of a department and putting it into Services to the Community, I think that's a legitimate concern.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
So, I think that solves that, if we could do that, but it won't change the bottom line, right?
No, it's just moving on.
Yeah, I think we need a motion to do that.
Okay.
Or Ann, she's got her.
No, it's just a walk-up.
You're rolling.
Can I just give one suggestion to the board? The other option would be, because I know this Services to the Community has been, you know, we've talked about this a few times, we could move all of the money into one line, a Services to the Community line, and then every Board of Selectmen, or every so often, you can allocate, you know, you guys can vote to allocate that money to a particular not-for-profit, it doesn't have to be, you know, listed this way.
Like this, so it doesn't.
So, that's just an option.
Okay.
You know, you could just say, okay, the total's, you know, forty-five thousand dollars, and, you know, every, um, every month or every so often, you know, we, you know, come before you with requests.
I think this is very simple, it's outlined here, it's like, by department, let's not make another headache for ourselves.
Yeah, I would not change it.
Yeah, we want on the ARPA.
Yeah, so, basically, just so I, I know for the, the motion, I'm just going to, I think I would say, um, Department one one five, Services to the Community, item nine three four, Youth Coalition Scholarship, two thousand dollars would be transferred to Department four two five, Youth Family and Human Services, item, Kevin, help me on.
Supplies and Services. It doesn't have a number, it's a new.
Supplies and Services, which is.
Under Department four two five.
Under, I know, Department four two five, does it have an item number?
Just be Youth Services Program, Supplies and Services.
It is, it doesn't, it just says Youth Program, Supplies and Services.
Okay, under Youth, transferred to Youth.
Yep.
Services Program, Supplies and Services.
Correct.
Is, did you get that? Okay. All right.
So, you want to call that motion? That's the motion, right?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All right, we've, uh, discussed this quite a bit, is there any further discussion that's necessary?
Well, this leaves us with the Police Cadets.
Well, let's do this one first.
Let's deal with this, and then we'll do it.
Yeah, one intention.
My, my only question is, what is the net effect?
It's just being moved, the, the money is moving, be, moving from here back into the other budget.
I just don't, yeah, okay, I just don't understand why, though, because it's kind of a donation, it's a scholarship, and.
I think it's because it would be setting precedents, that's, that's what I'm gathering, and that's not something that, and it's probably the smart thing, I do think it's the smart thing to do, to be honest with you, yeah, but the money's not being lost in that, it's still going to.
So, when we put together a committee, I'd like to volunteer to help set that up and just create parameters to do that for people who apply, and it's even sent to the existing people?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and my common reply is, whenever I donate money to somebody, I go, when they ask, I go, if I, if I can, I will, if I don't, I hope you understand, because I have a history of donating, as we have a history of donating, so there'll be times they may hear, no. Okay, all right. Well, I think it's something we can look at after we get the budget done, and we have time.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, move on.
All right, so, any further comment?
Well, this leaves us with the Police Cadets.
Then we have to.
We're going to do that in a minute.
Let's just deal with this one, all right. So, all right, uh, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion car.
I abstain.
You're abstaining, one abstention, okay. Uh, so the motion carries. Five, one, zero, one abstention, and, uh, yeah, okay.
All right, so then the East Line Police Cadets, Roseanne, I think you're on.
Okay, uh, this is coming from, uh, a request from the Police Department through a nonprofit organization to, um, then go to a nonprofit organization for an annual contribution, at least this is a note that's on in our book, uh, to help the youth of the community. Well, it's pretty vague. I, I, when I first saw it, I thought it was to support someone who was in the East Line Police Cadet Program.
Okay.
Oh, that's what I thought too, isn't it? Because it says East Line Police Cadets, so I thought, you know, they, they go to the, I think, the police station, I don't know, once a week for like six weeks or two months or something, or I, I don't know how often.
Exactly.
I can give a little bit on this, just because both of my children, um, participated in the program, it's, it's a great program.
Oh, great.
Um, and yes, it, it runs for eight to twelve weeks, um, they also, um, do the Walk of Horror, so they, that's a huge fundraiser for the Karen Share every single year, uh, so they do take time to create that whole entire, you know, situation, they make all of the stuff that goes into it. Um, so there's a lot of volunteer hours that go into the different things that they do. I am most certain that, um, Officer, uh, Halbauer could do a better job than me, but I will try to do my best here. Uh, they also do the collections of the Thanksgiving turkeys and all of those things that Stop and Shop. Um, they also help out at each and every event here in East Line, um, so, and then they have uniforms, and they have all of these different things, and they actually do go to, I wouldn't say it's a training class, but kind of, it's like they go to police school, uh, one day per week, uh, and they go down to the police station, now it's at the other one, and they go through different training scenarios where they are teaching them different things, uh, than police officers do, do. So, um, I think that that would be where the money would probably be going into. Of course, I can't speak for him, but I'm just trying to give some sort of context to what that program is. Um, and again, I, I want to say that maybe eight to twelve, maybe? Um, and again, I, I want to say that maybe eight to twelve, maybe, uh, kids participate in that program. And it's a great program and it does help our community in various ways, sure.
So it wouldn't be actually going then to the police department? It's going to this not-for-profit organization?
It goes to the separate organization. It is not, that money would not be going to the Eastline Police Department. It is a separate, um, program that Officer Halbauer honestly has, to my knowledge, I don't believe that he gets paid for running that cadet program. It is truly out of, I think, the love, right, of policing and wanting to, you know, bring the next generation in and, and that's exactly what they do. They also help out, uh, too. I wish I knew the girl's name. Uh, it's, it's, uh, Taylor, actually, the last name. I can't think of her first name.
Disgerm?
Huh?
Taylor Disgerm?
No, her last name is Taylor. I can't remember her first, but she's been doing the cadet program for a while now. She's been fantastic. And, um, they also do the first night. Is that what I'm saying? It's over by Flanders School. They just started a couple of years ago, so they're constant, yes. So they're constantly doing the events in town and they do a great job. So, um, I don't believe that this money would be going to the Eastline Police Department. Um, but next year, um, if the Junior Fire Department, right? Now, I don't know how that's set up. I believe that it is separate too, but I think it's a little bit different. Um, you know, like I said, I, I think that there should be a policy of parameters that's in place, that's going to have guidelines. Um, you know, I certainly, I don't want to take anything out. I said that at the last meeting and I, I don't want to take it out. I don't think that I should, we should be taking it out. That's just what I have on it. And then after that, um, if we're going to be discussing these two, we should be discussing pollinator pathways as well, although it wasn't brought up. That's all I have right now.
Well, I would put a motion on the floor, uh, to support the Eastline Police Cadets in the amount of five hundred dollars as a starter.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, um, so if I understand the motion, it would be to reduce, uh, the Eastline Police Cadets from twenty-five hundred to five hundred dollars, so a two thousand dollar reduction?
Yes.
Is that the motion? Okay. All right.
With the understanding that we would review this next year.
Okay. So, any, uh, any other discussion, comments, power card? I'd, I'd like to leave it the same this year and, and study it and find out the real value and all the things that make it up and then go from there, please. Um, I think five hundred dollars is kind of a, I, I understand it, we're here to cut, but on this matter, I, I think we should leave it in place and then do a little more, very limited study on what's going on with that. That's all.
I appreciate Don's com, um, comments. So we've got a motion, we've got a second on the floor. I myself am not in favor of five hundred, but I would counter, um, and say, you know, a thousand is where I would, would go. So if it carries, it carries and if it fails, then I'll put that out onto the floor.
I'll go along with that.
So we have a second?
So we have a second at, what, five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and you're proposing that if, if that motion...
Fails.
Fails, you're going to propose?
A thousand.
Okay, well, we'll, so let's see if, uh, let's see what happens here on, on the motion for five hundred dollars. Any, any further discussion? Uh, for what it's worth, uh, you know, I think it's, anything you do for kids that are trying to figure out where they want to end up in life and, and, uh, getting experience in different types of jobs and endeavors is always a good thing. And I think society always benefits from that. You know, if there's one kid that goes through this program, decides he wants to be in law enforcement, then it was worth it. So, um, I'm, I'm opposed to cutting it at all, but, uh, that's just my take.
Okay, so let me, well, we're still in discussion, but there is a motion on the floor. Is requesting an annual contribution from the town. So if we vote on the twenty-five hundred dollars, are we committing ourselves to the annual contribution in that amount?
No, because I think, I think we're going to form, Don was saying, we're going to form a board and go through all of them and kind of really put some policy in place to say, this is, this is what falls under the services to the community.
That's what I think it needs. I think we need a procedure and a policy.
Yeah.
Uh, I certainly agree with nine thirty-four, the other one we just did, that, that was setting a precedent, but on this one, uh... Roseanne, I just, I'm starting, I just, I, I texted a cop. I said, oh, the police cadets and asset to the town and the program. The answer is, that's the reason Lindsay became a cop, Lindsay Cattell. She was one. They help at events. Anything that helps recruit other police officers is an asset. Some parents have used it for father figures as well.
Yeah.
So...
It's a great program.
Okay. So let's move, let's, uh, then let's move the motion. Uh, those in favor of reducing it to five hundred dollars signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Abstain.
Abstain.
And we got two abstaining and one, two, three, four, so it's four. Two, what? Four nays.
And Roseanne.
And two abstain, right? Roseanne?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right.
So now...
Dan?
Go ahead.
I have a question before I proceed.
Yeah.
So, I'm not a fan of throwing a bunch of things out onto the, onto the floor and then having to fail and then go back and forth. So what I like to do is to try to have a consensus. If I can't get the full amount, can I get somewhere in between and get a consensus before I put a motion onto the floor? Is that fair? Is that okay with any, everyone?
Of course.
All right. So I had said a thousand, um, you know, and I could go with a thousand, but I also feel like it might be fair to do fifteen hundred to two thousand. And, and that's considering that twenty-five hundred is what's in there. So I want to hear from all of you where you're feeling it, it, it's a good amount, somewhere between the fifteen hundred, um, two thousand range to make a motion because I would like it to actually carry.
Well, I think the mode is two thousand on the column.
Yeah, so I'm comfortable with that. Don, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Roseanne, what do you?
I'm noncommittal at this point. We debated it enough.
All right. Fair. I'd like to motion...
Jason?
I'm, I'm kind of in the Roseanne category. Um, I feel like we're, we're kind of monkeying around with small amounts of money that mean a lot of things to some, some young people. I prefer if we could just move on. But I'll, I'll vote for whatever motion is up there.
So move on to leave it at twenty-five hundred?
I would leave it and move on at this point.
Okay. I'm very comfortable with that. So do I need to make a motion for that or can I just leave it?
Just leave it unless there's a motion to change it.
I'd like a motion, please.
Wait, what was the motion? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused what the motion is.
To keep the twenty, the Eastline Police Cadets at two thousand five hundred, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't need a motion to keep it. If you want to make a motion to change it, you can.
I will make a motion to redo, to, uh, reduce the amount to one thousand dollars.
We have a second?
Can we just go through this? Does it, was, do, wait, do we just make a motion for that?
I just made a motion to re, to make it one thousand, to reduce it to one thousand.
No, but I thought we already did...
No, we were getting consensus.
Oh, that was five hundred?
The amount was five hundred, this is a thousand.
Yeah, and then we were getting consensus. It's okay, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 I just, I just, too many numbers going around and I'm trying to...
We were trying to get consensus on where, if we were going to put another, where I was going to put another motion on the board because I, I really don't like things to constantly fail. It looks inconsistent and I don't like it. So I wanted to get a consensus. I am very comfortable with keeping at the twenty-five hundred. Don is con, are you?
I was comfortable with a thousand, three, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, so he's comfortable. Um, and Jason said that he was comfortable at leaving it. So then I was going to leave it because I don't need to make a motion on it. And, and correct me if I'm wrong here on, on how I'm kind of winding it down.
Okay, so now she made a motion.
Right, so Roseanne put another motion onto the board.
Okay, all right, so I'll second that motion, just leaving...
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to, uh, reduce the Eastline Police Cadets, uh, by fifteen hundred to make it one thousand dollars. Okay? So, uh, without further discussion, uh, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. So, same, right? Four, four nays and two abstentions.
One, one.
What?
One yay.
Oh, there's one yay?
Three nays, two abstentions. Who abstained?
I abstained.
And what?
It was four one one.
Just one abstention, thank you.
All right. All right, any further, uh, movement on this particular?
Okay, so it remains at two thousand five hundred?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Can we just take on pollinator pathways? Because that was the, uh, last and final one that was new to this and it wasn't brought into play, but it was new.
Where, where, which one is it?
Let me see it.
Uh, that's because it wasn't on the original sheet. Pollinator pathways came into, because she was there and it's fifteen hundred dollars.
How much do they get?
Um, I believe it's fifteen hundred, is that accurate?
Correct.
And I would also be in favor of keeping it right where it's at.
We don't have to do anything.
Okay.
All right. So are we now ready to, uh, is there any further discussion on the budget before we move to have it, uh, adopted?
I'll give you numbers in a sec, we'll be good.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I think we...
Okay.
Okay.
That was easy.
So the only, um, one thing I would like to talk about real quick. Um, sorry, I see everyone shutting their books. We're almost, almost done. The last conversa, last, the one thing we missed, um, cash capital versus debt, the, the secondary part of that capital. Um, just real quick, what do we want to do with it? So, um, let me just pull it up real quick. Um, over here to the right, we are going to either bond, a twenty-year bond, ten-year bond, five-year financing, which we are trying, I'm, I'm trying to wean us off. That is the acquisition program that, um, Superintendent Newton was talking about.
What page are we on?
Right on the first page.
Um, it's really the la, if you go to the last page, I just want to break down, it's all the way on the right.
Okay.
It's, uh, at the very bottom. If we just go right to the very bottom of that...
Oh, where it says bonds, lease, debt, cash capital?
Correct, yep. So the numbers have changed a little bit. These are the new numbers.
All right.
So for a twenty-year bond, we're looking at about nine point seven 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 million.
Wait, wait, wait. So that's bonds, you're saying?
Correct, yes, we're going to bond twenty and ten-year bonds. Together, it is ten million, six eighty-two, five hundred.
That's, that's for which, which bonds?
Those are for the ten and twenty years, so bo, all the bonding for the town. Now, if, where's my number? So really, we're going to back out.
And that's just for, just for the bonding, you only bond for the capital improvement plan, is that correct? Or am I, you don't bond for the operating budget or anything, right?
Nope, nope, yep, correct, correct. Yep. So let me just say what we're actually going to bond, just so everyone has. Two, six, nine, seven, three, nine, three. Okay, so we're going to be bonding about eight million dollars from this. On top of the eight million, we're rolling over six million of notes, two million dollars of the property. So next year, we're going to bond sixteen million dollars. Our next question really is, what are we doing with this two point six five, six, six two five? In the budget presented to the boards, um, and this is really the, this is a, you know, we have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in cash capital. On our, um, capital, uh, current year capital spreadsheet, we have two point six million, so we have a one point nine million dollar gap. Do we want to, does the board still have appetite to kind of take out a, the acquisition program? It's about five percent interest, that'll help us with cash capital this year.
Can, can you stop? Sorry, you, you, you lost me. Um, you said cash capital, I have two point seven. Did that change it to two point six?
Yep, these are the new numbers. Um...
I can't see it.
Can you just, yep, so, would you want to print this out?
Two thousand, wait, uh, not two thousand.
Two million, six twenty-five?
Yeah.
Seven fifty.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is current cash needs.
Okay. And you're saying, where are we going to get that money from?
Well, so the question is, do we want to increase cash capital a little bit? Do we want to take out another acquisition program? Do we want to move some of this to the bonding? What's the, that's the, this, that's the next question.
And what was the other question? You said, do you want to increase capital or do you want to do what?
So there's three pro, three questions to ask.
Okay.
One, um, do we want to increase cash capital, currently budgeted at seven hundred fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Question number two, do we want to take out another lease or otherwise known as acquisition program? I can't remember the third question.
Do we want to bond it?
Well, well, really, the, the, yeah, the third question's going to be answered by the, the answers from the first two. You know, what are we doing with cash and what are we doing with the acquisition program?
So, I would, I would like to see, right now, we have seven hundred fifty thousand, uh, in cash, right? But we need to, what is the number we need?
Two point six.
Two point six. I would like to see if we could raise that seven fifty to a mil, a straight million dollar cash.
Okay.
And then, um, I think that's ambitious, but it's, it's a start in, in the right direction of weaning ourselves off of either acquisition programs and, uh, bonding.
Well, it will end up costing us less.
In the long run.
In the long run, right.
It'll save us a lot, I mean, in the long, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, I, I'd like to see us, uh, if we could go up to a million dollars for cash capital and then whatever, uh, uh, where does that leave us in the other two areas if you do this?
So we still have a, if we do a million dollars of cash capital?
Yeah.
We will have roughly a one point, one point six million dollar deficit. Um, there's some large items here we can talk about that we can move. Um, let me zoom out here. I could print, if, does everyone want a new copy of this? I could print it real quick from the mailroom. No? Okay. Um, so for cash capital, we could move the technology, the five hundred thousand dollars of Board of Ed technology. Those are the computers we were talking about. They really probably wouldn't go into a ten or twenty-year capital. So the option would be to lease them again or pay with cash. Same thing with the vehicle. This is a sixty-five thousand dollar pickup.
Yeah.
Where's the vehicle? Where's?
It's down there in the Board of Ed.
Is that the grounds pickup with plow, that one you're talking about?
There's five hundred and the sixty-five.
Yeah, grounds pickup with plow.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
Just so I know where you're going.
And where would we move that? To, uh, five-year financing or...
If, if, if we had to, we could, I mean, we could put it in the ten-year because we get ten years from these vehicles. If, if we had to, um, or that means we're, we're, you know, mortgaging a car for ten years.
And what?
I mean, essentially, you're mortgaging the car for ten years.
But we get ten years out of vehicles.
We do, we do, yep, yep.
I mean, I would love to... I, I mean, if we could, what's the other option if we don't put it in the ten-year bond? A five-year financing?
Lease, the lease program again.
So, just taking back maybe three steps here. You are interested in increasing it to a million.
Right.
What, what's the overall long-term plan? Is it to get like four years, five years to get that much money, that, that two point six million in? Or is, is that as soon as possible?
So, the relationship, and Kevin can explain this thing at night, but why don't you explain this? It's, it's, it's like putting it on your credit card versus...
No, I get that, but you, we have, we have the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars right now and you're suggesting increasing it to a million. I understand that.
I wanna increase that.
I'm just thinking, to reach the goal of two point six million, there's gotta be some kind of timeframe involved. Are we trying to get it two years, three years, four years, five years, or just as soon as possible? 'Cause I'm thinking, uh, we, that'll determine what we need to cut if we determine how much time.
Well, what's a realistic goal?
It's more how we finance it. So, in other words, right now, we need, how much cash do we need? Two point?
Two point six.
Two point six. So, I'm saying, let's, let's take it on the ten-year a little bit and instead of seven fifty, let's, let's say we're, we're gonna deliver a million dollars in cash to pay that bill. And then, that difference has to be paid some other way. And it could be paid in a ten-year bond. Uh, we could move it out and, and take that five hundred and that sixty-five, move that out, uh, to a ten-year bond. Or we could, we could do, uh, a, a five-year fin- financing of some sort, right? Shorter term.
So, here's, here's my question. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is about twenty-nine percent of two point six million dollars. So, if we were to keep at that rate going forward, we would achieve their target within three, three and a half years.
But you're paying more in a, you're making, paying more in interest because, uh, if, if we take that two fif- if we, if we take two fifty, right? And where, where do we get that two fifty? It's by raising, uh, what we're gonna have to collect from the taxpayers, right? The two hundred fifty thousand.
The extra two, to make the million.
To make the million.
Yes, okay.
But the savings to taxpayers over time.
The interest.
The interest on that two fifty is, uh, significant. If, and if, if every year, we can start to achieve more and more cash, then our debt service starts to go down. And what we're trying to do is take some lumps now, do the, do the hard work now so that we become more fiscally, uh, solid and better shape in years to come. And so, by increasing that seven fifty to a million, we're, we're gonna pay two hundred fifty thousand more in cash than we would've. But that two hundred fifty thousand, we won't be borrowing it, I guess. We'll actually pay it. And we'll pay it by asking the taxpayers.
And then, two hundred fifty thousand comes from the taxpayers. Is that correct?
Comes from the taxpayers, instead of borrowing that.
About a tenth of a mill.
Yep.
At a tenth of a mill, okay.
So, one mill's two point seven million.
But what does that actually equate to? What does that look like? What does a tenth of a mill look like in the taxpayers' pocketbook? I'm just asking public, just to know. It, it's not a hard sell for me, to be honest with you. I am an anti-credit type of, I, I'm not a fan. I, I like to do cash. I like to just have what I have and I don't like debt. So, it's not a hard sell for me, but we're talking about our community and what that's gonna impact on them and what is happening right now where people can't afford gas, they cannot afford their electricity, honestly. I mean, people are being impacted very much financially. So, I just want to have dialogue publicly on what that actually looks like, um, for, for taxpayers. Because when you say we have to take the lumps now, I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
I don't love that, right? But in the long run, I'm really gonna love that. I am. And I think that other people, our children, will like that.
That's right.
Okay.
The sacrifices we make in the present.
But there are people that live in our town that are unable to make those sacrifices. So, I just need to know publicly what that actually looks like and what we're doing.
So, at the million dollars, if we did a million dollars of cash capital, these are the numbers. It's one point nine nine mill rate increase, eight percent, twenty-six, eight, seven. If we take it back to two, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, oh, stand by, just gotta scroll down a little bit. So, about nine tenths of a mill, uh, um, nine one hundredths of a mill. Now, what's the impact on our tax base? So, at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, if, um, let's just use the five hundred thousand dollar home, nice and easy. Five hundred thousand dollar home, this current budget cycle with seven fifty is going to impact a five hundred thousand dollar home to a thousand dollars, eighty-five dollars a month. Let me just make one quick change. Go back here. Go back to this. I can't, that number's very, looks, I think it's a two dollar a month increase.
What did you say, two dollars?
Two dollars a month.
But you said eighty-five dollars.
Between...
Three dollars a month. And I, I thought it was, um, do anyone remember that number? So, it's eighty-eight, oh, so, hold on, eighty-eight dollars.
Two and eighty-five is right away different.
You said ten eighty-five, you said ten eighty-five.
All right, so, stand by for a second.
So, now, the other thing I think we have to take into...
Well, let him finish.
Oh, I thought we were just doing math.
That's okay, it's alright.
You're stressing me out. Give me a second.
I am so sorry. I'm compelled...
You're fine, you're fine. I just wanna make sure my formula works.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna make anybody sweat, but I am compelled to ask these questions.
Nope, yep.
And I, and I think that it's fair. And the truth of the matter is, is, um, you know, when you're making decisions like this, like it, you wanna make the right decision. I always wanna make the right decision, but when you're making a decision like this on this type of level for everyone in our community, you know, I mean, I, I, I wanna make the right choices for people.
Um, so, the, the only other thing I was gonna say, can I talk while you're doing math a bit? So, sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but was that, but I think we also have to take into account is, you know, I think we've tried to cut as much as we can, just regardless of this. But the Board of Finance is also gonna have a chance to look at this and, and make cuts. So, you know, which is a good thing, 'cause hopefully, they'll make more cuts. Now, what we do with this, I guess we can listen to see what he has to say. But, you know, that, that's kinda how I see it. But if, if we can pay less interest later, I mean, I think that's a good thing. Well, anyhow.
Uh, very simplistic and, and I'm nowhere near as sophisticated as Kevin. But two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we've got eighteen thousand people, it's thirteen dollars a person for the year.
Thirteen dollars a person for the year.
I got the numbers.
Okay, okay.
Alright, just took me a second there to get the spotlight off me. Okay, so, on the left side, we have seven hundred fifty thousand. On the right side, we have a million dollars of cash capital, okay? The difference, so, if we're talking about five hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes went from going up, um, to nine thousand three seventy. They're now, they're now nine thousand four hundred. The difference is three dollars a month, not two dollars. So, it's twenty-four dollars a year for a five hundred thousand dollar household. The difference, that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, 'cause you floored me when you said eighty-five dollars. I was like, oh, my God, people are not gonna be able to do eighty-five dollars.
Yeah, no, 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 just a, just a three-dollar difference.
So, it's a three-dollar difference.
Yep.
Thanks for my simple...
Yeah, it was. So, my other question is this. I know we have right now, when I started on the Board of Finance, I'm, I'm, I don't have it exact, but I think our rainy day fund was something in the neighborhood of between seven and eight million dollars. Now, I think it's a fourteen or fifteen million dollars in my...
It's, it's not that high, no. It's, I think it's ten or eleven million off the top of my head. But re- um, one thing I've been talking with Dan about, that when we're talking about cash capital, I just wanna show everyone some, uh, peers in our area and, and show why we're trying to get away from debt and more on cash capital. So, these are our peers, based on the State Department of Education. Um, these are the dirgs, or the, um, these are our dirg peers, except for the one in Bold. Madison is in dirg B. It's in the second highest dirg in the state of Connecticut, right? It's one I look towards as like, okay, what are they doing right over there that we can bring here to East Line?
Yes.
Right? When we look at the Board of Ed, they're at sixty-five percent, we're at sixty-seven, so we're a little higher than them. Um, Town, they're at twenty-six, we're at twenty-five, very similar. This is where we start to get different. Their debt, as a percentage of their total, um, as their total, you know, operating, their total budget, they pay one point seven million dollars towards debt, but they're paying five point five million dollars in cash capital. Okay, every year, they take five million bucks and put it towards capital projects. They don't have debt. Their debt service is less than two million dollars. Let's go down to us, let's go down to us, the red at the bottom. Our debt is over six million a year and we have less than a million of cash capital. We are the exact opposite. So, we've gotta flock those.
That's what I'm trying to do. That's what we're trying to do. Does that make sense?
And so, over the next ten years, really, ten, fifteen years, we are gonna be in a little bit of a conundrum where we have this debt we have to pay off while increasing debt, uh, cash capital. So, we have a balancing act to do, to, you know...
So, that come, that comes back to my question is, what about that, the general fund that we have?
So, the general fund, um...
Wait, are you talking about general fund or rainy day fund?
Rainy day fund.
The same, the same thing. There's no rain, rainy day fund is fund balance.
Yeah.
So, when you hear, um, anyone use the rainy day fund, even if the state of Connecticut, the rainy day fund is just their fund balance of that fund. So, ours, um, we, we cannot use, um, the, the fund balance to offset this. You, you can a little bit, but we have a use of, we have a fund balance policy now, the Board of Finance adopted. That kind of limits what we can do with use of fund balance, right?
Alright.
And there's a bigger pict- I need me to cut you off.
No, that's all ahead.
And, 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 and so, the, the, the bigger picture is, let's start doing the things that we can't do everything at once. But, you know, we've gotta finally come to grips with, with things. And we've tried to adopt some policies in this budget that will begin to serve us down the road. One is, we already have the Coastal Reserve Fund, the OPEB, uh...
OPEB Trust.
OPEB Tr- Trust. Uh, these are things that have been put off that have to be dealt with. Uh, we put some money in aside to buy a new fire truck ten years from now. We, uh, we're trying to convert a little bit to more cash, cash capital. All these little things, when you start putting it together, it starts to create a movement in the right direction. And in a way, the years from now, we're no longer sitting here, but if we start this, this momentum now, we can maybe really make some change to help those people that you were talking about that are having trouble paying their electricity or, or a bill that comes in. Um, uh, it, it will help them, uh, down the road. And that's what I'm hoping that we can achieve, is the beginning of really sound and excellent fiscal policy and still get the job done.
So, my question is, now that we've made this pitch, how do, what's the mechanism to do this? You are suggesting a million. Do we make a motion and say, I, I would increase this value to a million?
Yeah, we increase it from seven fifty to two hundred fifty.
I'd like to have a little extra discussion, just quickly. So, in terms of everyday understanding, how much money do we have for emergency expenditures?
In our budget?
Yes.
So, you're trying the contingency, right? Is that what that would be considered?
I, I think so.
Yep.
And that's different than the rainy day.
Yeah.
But that's what builds the rainy day fund.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a figure.
Is it one twenty? Hold on one second. Contingency, so, um, so, really, it's two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, so, anything that come up, any things that come up that are not in this budget but are in the sense of true emergencies that have to be taken care of, then we have, we will have, how much did you say?
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand to, to address that.
Correct.
And what happens if we have a real emergency that the two hundred fifty thousand won't cover? Do we have extra money that we can access?
We have, you know, like, um, Mr. Kello was saying, we have a fund bal- the use, the town has a fund balance in our general fund. I mean, so, here's how, um, when I, when I've talked to other finance directors about this, if there's an emergency, like a big storm comes in or something happens, um, most of the time, if it's a level of millions of dollars, the federal government's gonna step in. If there's a large disaster, federal government reimburses ninety percent through FEMA. Um, so, really, it would just be a stopgap. How can the town kind of put a Band-Aid on it until we, you know, you triage, you know, triage really is what it comes down to.
Well, just as we recently found out that, uh, somehow, you're just below the, the threshold and we don't get the money, it has to come out of our, our, our own funds. For instance, the recent storm that we had, we couldn't collect money 'cause we were just under the guideline. So, I just wanna make sure that whatever we decide to do, that we have a true emergency fund there.
Great question, great.
Yeah, so, the emerg- two hundred fifty thousand, depending on what is left, um, in the personnel contingency after the non-affiliated, um, group meets, there might be some money left there. But really, um, as a, you know, as a budget, a good budgeting practice, you should budget about a half a percent of your budget contingency. I, you know, we're at, uh, we're a little more than half. I mean, between all the contingencies added up together, um, that's about, that would... Uh, yeah, we're about point six percent, um, of the overall budget. So, we've satisfied the, you know, GFOE best practices with this budget. Um, ideally, this two fifty, that's why I put three hundred thousand. This should grow. Last year was two hundred, this year's two fifty, next year, I'd like to see it three hundred. Got to spend emergencies, but also, that's how you grow that fund balance. There's, there's no line somewhere where it says, okay, this builds fund balance. Fund balance naturally, over the course of time, diminishes. As the budget grows in size, the dollars in there represent a smaller and smaller portion, right? So, ten million today could be, uh, you know, ten million is twelve percent. Five years from now, ten million is gonna be five percent, or something very small. So...
So, we're trying to build conservatism into this budget for the, for the long term.
Proactively.
Proactively, yep. And, um, and the other reason that's important is, you know, you see the line that says debt service. Well, it's absolutely essential that we maintain our standing, uh, in the bond markets. And the way we do that is not touching that reserve fund that they wanna see a certain amount, they wanna see that coastal resiliency fund. So, we're, we're taking all the steps that we can, uh, to make ourselves look attractive in the bond market. And that saves us money too down the road by getting a slightly better interest rate. So, um, all these things taken together, I think this is a really, uh, responsible budget that we're proposing.
Okay, so, do I need to make a motion regarding?
The move of the money.
Do, do we have the appetite to do it? I think, I think we should, but...
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we have, we can't be exact on all of these lines. And oftentimes, opportunities come along where there's, we've got people that are working hard on grants, but most of these grants require a co-pay. Um, so, I just wanna make sure that we've got a little play money here.
No. I mean, I would consider that contingency play money. That money, I mean, this current year, um, the, the emergency at the wall, that's twenty-five thousand. We had a dock float up on our, on our beach, that was seven thousand. Uh, there was something else. So, that money's really used truly for an emergency, something where, um, prime example, um, Mr. Pogra just told me that, hey, we need to put the steep grant in. That would probably have been an additional appropriation through the, you know, Board of Select and Board of Finance. And we wouldn't have probably taken that as a contingency, just as 'cause you would like to ideally preserve contingency for that exact reason.
So, for instance, um, we had an opportunity to get a grant for thirty thousand dollars and the co-pay is like two thousand dollars to buy in. We don't have that kind of loose money. It's only lose out...
Yeah, I would, I would say, unless we have in-kind contributions, which are my favorite kind of grant contributions, um, where they say, okay, we'll just put some hours to it or volun- you know, put some ma- you know, um, something we've already budgeted. But that two thousand dollars, unless that specific department asks for it, um, I, I would probably say, okay, well, just wait until you get two thousand in your budget 'cause I would rather not hit contingency for something like that.
And then, lose the grant money. So...
Yeah.
I just, I just worry that we don't have a large enough margin.
It's a pretty tight budget.
For us to, for us to lose money by not being able to come up with matching fund.
But increasing this doesn't affect that.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
No, it doesn't. We are, we're gonna pay for this by the extra twenty-five bucks a year that everybody's, uh, gonna pay.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, I'm sorry. Uh, so, we're gonna pay for this. And we're not, and, and it doesn't take away from any fund or add to a fund. It's, it's what is our appetite to pay right now.
Now, is that providing the Board of Finance agrees?
Yeah, well, everything we do.
Everything we do has to be the Board of Finance.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we'll see what they think.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they'll tend to agree.
Well, I'm glad I'm sitting next to a math major.
Punching numbers into my calculator.
What's it telling you?
To check out.
They work?
They work.
Mrs. Ladd would be thrilled.
So, I'm not quite sure what kind of motion I need to make then.
To move to increase cash capital by two hundred and fifty thousand.
To a million.
Department seven-two-four.
Oh, Department seven-two...
You can say Department seven-two-four, yep, cash capital.
Move to increase cash capital from seven hundred fifty thousand to one million dollars.
Yes. Okay. Do we hear, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, great. Any further discussion? We beat this up pretty good, but, uh, we got the Finance one-on-one here we're doing.
As lo- as long as, as long as, we spent last month going through every item in this thing, looking at how we focus as hard on spending as we, as we do just raising capital, you know what I'm saying, as far as, we, we, we consider every purchase we make, including the B pollinator, that we, we, uh, we, we, we work as hard on that end to control it, 'cause things are gonna go up, you know?
I think we've done as best we can.
I agree.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Signify. We're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. I think that was a great move. I'm, I'm really happy that we did that, I have to tell you.
Okay, I need to still do...
We have to do the final.
The final. I just need the numbers.
Yep. I heard there's a, you caught, what's it, you caught game this on TV recently?
Too late.
Did we miss it?
Thirty minutes. Done with the first half.
It's alright, take your time.
Tried to get you out of here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine, great. I accept my priorities.